Board member to donate $100 towards this. It gets us at the $900 mark. And I'm comfortable hitting up at least one or two other retired board members. And outgoing board members to see if we can get a few more dollars in that account. And that's kind of where it is. So it's up for, I don't even know if it really is a vote, if it's our donations. But in any event, we'll structure it that way and pursue it that way. That way it's formal for other boards to come. So it's earmarked there. So that's where it is.
Hey, Louis. Maybe I missed this. It was the 500 that kind of surprised me. So is it, would it be two recipients if we're funding at $100 each? Or if we're all giving 100, but we're only giving out 500?
So we'd like to earmark $1,000 in the account to try and hopefully maintain it about that or better. You know, it'd be nice to have the count maintain itself somewhere. Within the school boundaries, it'll make very little. There's not much that the district can do with those type of investments. They can't get too creative. Privately, it can be creative. Any one of us can hold it and manage it ourselves. I would highly recommend against all that. I mean, there's legal statutes in places that say why we shouldn't do that. So it's designed, right now it's earmarked as a single recipient at $500 to that single recipient. Again, and that number came from our outgoing and incoming student reps, who received several scholarships, applied for several scholarships. And they kind of felt that that was a sum of money that they could, you know, really do something with. You know, after the $100, you can certainly do something with that as well. And that's kind of, that was like from square one is kind of where that number kind of floated out.
But if we're all giving 100, you know, that's 900. So I'm just trying to, like, are we funding it for two years at a time? Like, what's happening with the?
I think we should fund it every year.
But if we're funding 900 and we're giving out 500, you know, what's the other 400?
The goal would be to get this account to gain some capital. And then there's a, I don't know, Margaret, what would it be called?
The Foundation?
There's a foundation in Orange County that they're, what they do is they manage money for these type of items. And for small fees, they can do this. We have to work to explore it more. It was a little, a lot to be had in that area of the investment side. The goal was to get this earmarked, get it in, and get it established for the '21-'22 season. And then throughout the year, continue to explore that investment side of it. So right now, we would be giving the money to Harvey. He would place it wherever he places that and invest it wherever he can invest it.
So if I understand it correct, so we all donate 1,000, let's 100. Let's 1,000, what?
Just often.
Yeah.
I heard it.
Yeah, it's on the public record.
Minutes, please, minutes.
And there's one retired board member, perhaps a recently retired board member, who would donate another 100. Let's say it's 1,000.
Right.
So that's 500, 500 left over. So you're saying the leftover 500 would be invested? And that would, the goal of that would be presumably to build some sort of larger fund down the road? So we could either expand this scholarship or maybe have two scholarships? Is that the idea?
Yeah. On its first stepping stones here, it'd be just, let's get this thing formed. And certainly, the committee stands. We can, this can evolve over the year or years to come. Hopefully, it does. Hopefully, really, it does. And gains legs and, you know, can get some capital and maybe help two people, you know, for.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry. Has there been discussion about the criteria of, like, what's the profile of the awardee? And then also, who's going to make a decision as to giving that scholarship to someone specifically?
It was the committee's, it was the committee's desire to make, to ensure that this scholarship was available to any graduating senior. That was really the base, the starting point of the whole, of the whole thing. So we didn't want, we didn't want, as the board, we didn't want to feel like the Board of Ed was supporting an art or a sport or an instrument or a play or a demographic. We wanted, we treaded very carefully to ensure that it was all encompassing and that really, any senior, any graduating senior qualifies to have this.
Is it needs-based or is it academic distinction? Or what's, like, how would we award it or what's the focus of it?
So if you, if you guys recall back when this was first presented, Josh Sandler, who was one of our student reps last year, he and Giselle, who was the other student rep, both felt that it was very important for this to be available to perhaps underrepresented students. And the students, we had, Josh and Giselle were on the committee, as were this year's student reps, who you will meet at the next meeting. So John and Caleb were also there, and they had phenomenal ideas. And so it's, it doesn't make a difference if you're going to tech school or you're going in the military or if you're going to college or if you're going straight to work. It's going to be something that any student who's graduating can apply for. So all the information that Louis sent out to all of us, it kind of highlighted everything. So the goal is to get the fund established. Margaret has been in contact with the Orange Foundation. And they, there are certain criteria that they have. And so that's what she's working out details with them to see if we would be a good fit for them. But the goal is to get the money in. It would sit with the district funds for right now earmarked for this scholarship. And then it would move over to investments, hopefully somewhere midway through the year.
That's, that's the only question, actually, not this part of it. It's the part with the fund itself. And I know from past experience that whenever auditors talk about funds that can, they, not for any nefarious reason, but things like funds for kids' projects and things like that within a district, that they really, I want to make sure that our auditors are aware of it and Harvey's not stuck with some small, I don't know.
One of the first steps was, I met with Harvey first on, this is last year, and discussed avenues. He explained all the avenues we brought to the committee level. And it, the district manages other monies for other scholarships, other than, you know, what would be this one. I don't know the amounts. I didn't, I don't, it's not my, I don't care.
No, it doesn't matter.
So it's not the first, it wouldn't be the first scholarship that the district, and I say manage, manages, you know.
Is it the first board scholarship, though? I'm just curious.
As far as I know.
It is. And that's the only reason to be a little more sensitive. And you had mentioned an outsourced fund that.
Yeah, the Community Foundation of Orange and Sullivan is a local foundation that oversees a lot of scholarships, a lot of nonprofit scholarships, the Corrine Feller, individual fellowships as well and scholarships. So they generally have a certain limit of the size of what they will work with you with.
Okay.
And I've been talking with the director to see, because I believe it's like a $5,000 minimum investment. So they're looking in to see if there's a kind of a loophole as to whether we can get in there with like 1,000 or 1,500 as a starting amount. So that's where we are in our conversation right now.
Does that accrue interest or?
Oh, yeah, yeah. They invest it, it makes some serious money. And the nice thing is, is that you can, you can write a check anytime you want. You know, like, so June comes around and the winner needs their $500. We say, okay, cut a check for this, you know, for this student and then done. You can, you can log into their system and see where it's invested, see, you know.
It's very transparent.
Yeah, yeah. It's a great, yeah.
That would be ideal.
And it's been structured and well-going.
But I understand if there's a.
Right. And that's the ultimate, we wanted to get the money into the district now to have this set.
That makes sense.
And then between now and the time that it actually will be, you know, sent out or given out for the first time, inevitably, it will be sitting with CFOS.
That's great. That makes a lot of sense. Thank you.
So Margaret just said something, get the money into the district now. But if the money is going to sit and collect dust, because the district's not making money on money it holds in hand.
But it's not a district.
Why do we need to get the money in now? And I'm, and maybe I'm talking my position. I probably could invest money and make that $100 in relatively little time. But if I give the $100, then I don't have it to invest. So, and I can invest it better than the district can because I have more avenues, as Louis was saying. So I'm not sure why the need would be to fund that now. I think it's important to designate a funding date for that. But I don't know why we would impose upon ourselves the restriction to fund it now when we probably could invest it individually ourselves and get $100 rather easily in the market. But I just threw that out there.
I'll jump to Harvey for a moment. I believe, Harvey, you shared with me in one of our early meetings was, unless the money is in the district's, unless the money is there, the scholarship can't exist. It can't be a promissory note?
Well, the money, yes, the money needs to be there. It doesn't necessarily mean that the money has to be overseen or administered by the district, much to your point. If the money, we are restricted as a district as to what we can pay, what we can invest in, what John was alluding to. It's very, very limited, very risk adverse. So we would not necessarily earn a lot relative compared to what, say, a foundation could invest. In terms of making this scholarship, whether we manage it or somebody else manages it, that's okay. We don't need to physically have it to issue that scholarship. If the board says to guidance at the high school, there's a $500 scholarship, here's the winner, they can very easily, the board or the foundation on behalf of the board, or if you have your own checking account, can write the check to the student, okay? If it's, if we're holding the money, we would write the check as per your direction. So there's, again, there's a couple of different avenues here.
But I think John's question is, you know, can we wait until March? And then say, okay, now is, here's our 500 bucks, you know, Coral, Community Foundation of Orange and Sullivan? And say, you know, now the scholarship is available? Because in between now and then, John can take his $100 that he wants to give to the scholarship fund, invest it on his own, and why not make another $100 on his own, you know, and then give us? So I understand what you're saying.
And just to clarify from Harvey, the funding date for all our scholarships that come from various sources, is that at the start of the school year? Or is that by the time the senior night awardee is presented? How does, what's the timing of that?
It could be, it doesn't have to be the beginning of the year. It could be whenever someone wants it. The bottom line is that if you're telling a student you won the award sometime pretty soon after senior night, they're looking for that check. Right. They got tuition to pay, right?
But the big check isn't an actual check, just submitting that.
The big cardboard one. Yeah, so I'm sorry then, I, Harvey, I pulled away from our meeting that the money had to be earmarked there to make the scholarship on the board level legitimate, I guess is maybe a word I could use. That's what I took away, I guess.
Yeah, it does.
I just heard differently.
It doesn't necessarily have to be, you know, the full faith and credit of the board is what we'd be relying on when we go forth with that.
So it sounds like we can establish this.
And we can, we can always do the PR for this scholarship and announce that it's going to be there. And they can totally apply for it, as long as we've got that 500 bucks to give them at the end.
Yeah.
And after this meeting, I want to sit down with John and see how I can double my money.
John, when I spoke to Mr. DeBolt, he said to me, what date do you want this to be done on? And I said, Mr. DeBolt, whatever, you are the reviewing team. He has a review team for scholarships, an odd number of folks, so there's never a tie. I said, what's convenient for you and your team? I don't want to burden the system. That would be the last goal of mine, anyway. And so May 1st was his deadline date to have the applications in by. So gives them a moment to review. And then, I'm not quite sure what seniors award night is.
Yeah, so you may have just answered my question, was who is going to review? Because I saw the materials and the rubric for grading. So that would be Mr. DeBolt and his team? Or the board would also review and give their ratings?
No, out of, I think out of good practice, we want to be out of it.
Sure.
So, you know, avoid the nepotism or, and again, not on this board, maybe, but just let's set the right stage.
And just one additional question. So that from reviewing the materials, in terms of the applicant, it looked like we're looking, I got your goal of it's open to everybody and we want to not have it specific to one. It looked like it was very open to somebody who has shown great leadership, great community service, great, you know, performance in athletics or extracurriculars. I didn't see anything about academics. Is that intentional? Or was that just assumed that academics will be part of it?
Yeah, non-academic was intentional. We didn't want it to be, because again, with consulting with Mr. DeBolt, and he also shared, you know, Jim, you highlighted all like the top five, the magic five, you know, leadership, community service, yada, yada. There's also questions and rubric designs in there that target the student that maybe does not have community service hours or does not have after-school activity hours because they have a job that they're taking care of a family member for, supplementing somehow. So we didn't want the academic scholar to hit the five level and skyrocket.
Sure.
And run that, and run the gambit on that versus, you know, another student who does the same time but at a different, in a different effort. We wanted to make sure, we wanted to make sure that student also was able to shine through that rubric and those.
Absolutely, and perfectly well reasoned. I just noticed the absence of academics and wanted to.
Specifically.
Just wanted to understand if that was intentional or not. And you can certainly make the argument you just made is perfectly valid.
And I'll be honest, we, I think we did a great job as a board. I want to pat my own back. I think we did a great job for being who we are and hone this thing in. When it hit Mr. DeBolt's desk, he, everything he said, I mean, he shined it and honed it in and funneled it down to something that was like, oh, my gosh. Like, I thought we had it at 99-yard line. He, you know, we were short and he really honed it in. So I think, I think it's a fantastic scholarship and idea.
There's one more issue that I know we're running along on this, that it could be a potential legal issue. I just want to put on the table now. We, I think when, before we launch this, we need to have a plan for what, for that excess money. You know, like, we're allocating 500 this year to spend and we invest the extra 400 or 500. I'm not an expert in fund accounting, obviously, but I know that that is an issue. You do have to allocate, you have to be clear about what the intent of that money is for any 501(c)(3). So I don't, I don't think it's going to be good enough to just say, oh, we're going to use it eventually and not itemize what that's going to be for. So both for the legal issue, but also, you know, we're not going to have the same board year over year. So I wouldn't want that to just, the point of that to become lost in successive boards. And we just, at some point, we just have this nest egg of money that nobody knows what to do with. So just submitting that now, we obviously have time to think about it, but to get it on our radar.
Yeah, so just as a closing, then I think we're there, not this meeting, but perhaps everybody can review the documents and we can propose it next meeting as something we can adopt and then, and then put it into Mr. DeBolt's queue of available scholarships.
Thank you, Louis.
Thank you, everybody.
Larry, do you have any update for us on facilities?
Yeah. After tonight's presentation, the Facility Committee is going to meet on the 14th at the Buildings and Grounds meeting at 4:30. So we're ready to go. And an agenda will come out right after this meeting, when we get a feel for what the rest of the board wants to do. Would you like me to do the Orange County School Boards Association meeting now?
Oh, certainly, thank you, yes.
That was last night, last evening, it was virtual. I want to thank Jim, he attended. No, I'm not going to embarrass you that you weren't there. It was a, it was a pretty good meeting. They went over what the NISBA convention was going to be like. They previewed the convention. The actual voting is going to be virtual. But they did, went through a lot of what-ifs. If the, you know, if New York City says you have to X, they have how to respond to that. If they say Y, they have to respond, they have what to do to respond to that also. They didn't want to go virtual this year because of the feedback they had gotten from all the participants, that they missed the interaction and the vendor displays and that interaction with the vendors. But reality, only about half the number of people have signed up to go to the convention itself. So they had about 1,500, give or take. And the previous year, when there was no COVID, there was 3,000. So it has taken a hit. I already forwarded everybody the handouts that were given that night. So, you know, the rest of the dates, so that you can put them in your calendar and, you know, remind yourself. As they begin to formalize what presentations will happen, I'll make sure you all get that. Trying to think if I missed anything else. There will be a mask mandate down there. There's also a vaccination mandate, because New York City has mandated that. They're working on how to, the logistics of that. And I guess that's, they're looking to make a board president's forum on the Orange County School Boards Association website.
Oh, nice.
So that board presidents can share. There was, they did share how their first day went. For the most part, everybody's went pretty much as ours did. It was nice to have the kids back, they were wet, and buses were late. So that was fairly universal. They have met with the Orange County, well, the, Bill Hekt had mentioned that the superintendents have met with the Orange County Executive and the Department of Health Director. And they're pretty much at this point keeping their hands off. They're letting the state guide us. There'll be some, they'll be sharing information. There's a group, and I know I wrote it down here someplace, and for the life of me, I can't remember what the, the number, maybe you can read, ah, the Diversity Equity and Inclusivity Group that the New York State School Boards Association has formed. There is a member of that on our, from our association. And they will be sharing information. And once, once that happens, they'll do. And I've also given you the resolution book, it was in that, what I had handed out in your email, so.
Thank you, Larry.
You're welcome.
Margaret, is there any update on visitation right now? There is, actually. Let me tell you about it. So we're through, Megan and I have been working together. She's got a number of dates from principals that will work for visitation. And we just have to hammer it out tonight with the Visitation Committee, have everybody see what dates are the best, and we'll be in, hopefully by the end of the month, beginning of October. Okay, thank you very much. Any other committees, I mean, it's the beginning of the year, so not, everybody's been meeting and getting organized yet. But Jim, go ahead.
Are non-visitation committee members, can we come along?
I don't think that's the way it works. Not this time, we can only have a certain number of people who go in. Otherwise, it's considered a meeting. So if it turns out that one of the committee members can't make it, I'm happy to tell you about it and then you can fill in, okay?
We wouldn't be discussing board business. I mean, so it wouldn't be a meeting to have multiple, a meeting is only if you're discussing board business, I mean.
Yeah, but I think all the committees, none of the committees are allowed to have more than four people on.
I'll look into that particular question for you, Jim, and I'll let the board know.
I mean, five board members could go out to dinner, as long as they don't discuss.
Board business, yes.
Board business, right?
But isn't the committee, committee itself board business? It's a group of people coming into our classrooms and so on. So it's not to overwhelm the students and the whole, and our teachers and everyone. So certainly welcome, I think if we can swap out, that's probably the best. So it doesn't seem like a massive, like, who are these people coming into the classrooms?
Yeah, and it is a committee of the board, too, what Teresa just said. But yeah, definitely, if someone can't make it, Margaret would definitely reach out to other people, so, thank you. Any other committees have any updates right now or just? I don't have any dates set up for policy yet.
That's okay.
I will get back to you on that.
All right, thank you. I'm going to move on to Mr. Dade's update.
All right, good evening. I'm going to be brief. So excited about day two. I'm glad we got day one in yesterday. So, but thank you to our community, our staff, and most importantly, our students for their patience and understanding with a two-hour delay on day two. One of the goals I'll be talking about later is to get, help our district transition back to its pre-COVID environment as soon as practicable. Some numbers, just to support that we're off to a great start. Our enrollment is topping 3,000 again. Last year, we dipped under 3,000. So as of today, we have 3,043 students enrolled. Last year, at this time, we dipped down to 2,991. And then pre-COVID, we were at 3,120. So we're bouncing back in that trend that we would all expect in our fantastic district. Some other numbers to support successful transition. Last year, to start the year, we had over 200 students medically remote. As of today, we have under 10. So that just says a lot about what our team, our collective team, from our staff. Everyone's working hard to make sure that we have layered mitigation strategies to keep our students and staff safe. And I feel like these numbers are a testament to that, to have under 10 medically remote students across this large district of over 3,000 students says a lot. And then to highlight our students to end, on behalf of Tony Ravinsky and our music department, there are students that I'll read out that were selected as participants or alternates for the 2021 NISMA All-State Performing Ensembles. They'll be performing in Rochester, New York, December 2nd. It's going to be nice and warm, so you all should come out. The students that were honored, thousands of students auditioned for this honor last spring at solo festivals throughout the state. And these students were selected and will be representing our district. Jonathan Archangel for All-State Jazz, tenor saxophone. He'll also be serving as an alternate for All-State Band with tenor saxophone. Benjamin Carter, All-State Mixed Chorus as a bass. Natalie Sinalentano, All-State Symphonic Band, playing the flute. Victor Perez, All-State Jazz Alternate, playing the guitar. Caleb Sandler, who will be joining us next meeting, All-State Orchestra Alternate, playing the cello. Joshua Wozniak, All-State Band Alternate, playing the euphonium, which I play very well. And Samuel Wozniak, All-State Jazz, playing the tenor trombone. So congratulations to these students, another great showcase of the talent that we have amongst our great students here. Thank you.
Okay, just very briefly, I'm watching what's going on with the state very closely. Very excited for this district to be back and having our students back in full time. And I think that that's wonderful. And we'll see how we're going to go with what the State Department of Health comes out with. But we're just listening and watching and getting legal updates and that sort of thing. And I kind of echo what Larry said as well, that we really haven't heard anything from our Commissioner Health for the county, and we'll see where that goes as well, so. And on that, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. The purpose of the consent agenda is to permit the Board of Education to make more effective use of its time by adopting a single motion to cover those relatively routine matters. Is there anyone at this time that wishes to discuss anything individually?
Nancy, could we take 10, which I believe is the Office of State Controller response?
Yep.
Off the consent agenda? Thank you.
Nancy, like to take item nine out?
Item nine, okay. Okay. So it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following consent agenda as is submitted by the Superintendent of Schools, items two through eight and item 11. Do I have a motion?
Can I move?
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried, thank you. Motion carried, thank you. Okay. Number nine, school safety plan resolution. Resolved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools at the Cornwall Central School District, Board of Education does hereby adopt the district-wide school safety plans for the 2021-22 school year. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
And discussion.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment. I think since rolling over the safety plan adds a pandemic plan as per the state, and we should all vote for it, and I'm going to vote yes on it. I just wanted to make a comment. In there is the memorandum with the county sheriffs, and I know in the past in the district there's been a discussion of if we, as part of a capital project, can enhance security at our school districts, that that may or may not be necessary. So as we talk about a capital project, just wanted to raise that for something to think about as a district of, is that necessary, not necessary? I know it's been discussed in the past, I don't pretend to know the answer right now, but I think it's something that we should discuss as we talk about capital projects. That's all.
Okay, thank you, Jim. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried, thank you. And number 10, resolve that the Board of Education does hereby approve the district's corrective action plan as it relates to the information technology audit conducted by the New York State Office of the State Controller dated August 2021. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Discussion, John?
Hey, thank you, Nancy. So in the document, which I don't believe has been sent yet, is that correct? Has that done?
Everything was sent to us. Everything was sent.
No, 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 sent to the state. I'm sorry. Right, right, we're ratifying it to send to the state. I just want to make sure. So it's still a draft at this point, right? So I noticed on the bottom of the document, there was a, in terms of the corrective action, in terms of implementation, there was something that listed the responsible parties for that implementation, and it listed the policy committee. And the other people that are listed are actually individuals that are in the chain of command that make a lot of sense to me as being responsible for the implementation. But I saw the policy committee being listed responsible for implementation, and my question is, and I'm still wet from being in a wet basement, so I'm sorry that I'm catching up here, is what's the intent of that term, implementation, I guess? Thank you.
So the particular implementation plan of action is the district will develop and communicate comprehensive security policies. Anytime we're tasked with presenting new policies, that is automatically going to go through the board. The board's primary role is, one of the primary roles is policy. So the implementation is just like we've done all last year. What is the process to bring a new policy forward? Policy committee reviews it, and then it goes to the full board. So that's, in my definition, would be implementation of, it wouldn't be, I couldn't present policy as new without that happening. That's a key component of implementation.
And that's fair, I appreciate the clarification. But for the avoidance of doubt, is the policy committee going to be writing that policy or reviewing what the Director of IT and the Assistant Superintendent for Business, as well as you and the other team members, put together for their review?
We would take the first...
You're implementing.
Absolutely.
Got it. And the board will approve the policy, and that policy will then be implemented by the staff.
Correct.
Thank you.
Sorry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried, thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to new business, non-consent agenda items, and discussion of superintendent's goals. So Terry, I will have you present those.
So this has gone out to the board already, was able to preview it with our staff during Superintendent's Conference Day as well. So just for the public who wasn't able to attend either, goal number one is maximize in-person instruction while safely and effectively transitioning the district back to its pre-COVID environment as soon as practicable. So this isn't something I pulled out of thin air. We surveyed our parents at the end of last year, asking, what does your child need to be most successful as we come out of this pandemic? And this was number one by far from our parents, is bring back what made, what makes Cornwall so special and unique. So that's goal number one. Goal number two is provide district-wide social and emotional supports for students, families, and staff with a focus on those most impacted by the pandemic. So it's no mystery that SEL and social-emotional supports are a focus nationwide, as we all have been impacted in different ways with the pandemic. So that's going to be a focus for us this school year. And goal number three, transition our district to a one-to-one school district for electronic devices by the end of the 21-22 school year. This gives me goosebumps to even have it as a goal this soon after what we experienced last summer going into the fall of not being able to offer families remote instruction due to infrastructure issues. So to go from that, worrying about cabling and wiring, and can we turn our, get our computers to work, to going one-to-one is really exciting. So those are our three goals for this year.
Anyone have any questions for Terry?
Terry, just one question. In terms of the amount of year groups without computers, and I'm sorry to put you on the spot, what percentage of the district currently has not been assigned those computers? So how big is this goal of one-to-one, is basically my question?
So it's significant. The district had embarked upon a strategy of all eighth graders receiving, so you all are well aware of that. Ninth graders, as they moved on up to the high school, they would keep it. So it was really only about three to four, Megan, that I can think of that would have had one-to-one had we stuck with our previous plan. So we really only have three to four grade levels district-wide that would have had one-to-one without this as a goal. So I don't have the numbers, I can get that to you all.
But in terms of the percentage, so we're going from, say, thirty percent of the district currently one-to-one, and so this is the remaining sixty-six percent of the district's going to have. So that's a big, that's a big left.
That's correct. Yeah, absolutely.
Terry, one, the buzzer, I beat you to the buzzer. The only phrase that sticks out to me, and I wonder if it's, there's nothing wrong with it, but it just, a discussion point, the pre-COVID environment. Because I think, you know, there are things that we obviously, is that the goal, to go back to February 2020, right? Or is it maybe to come out with, into a new world and maybe even better world? I know the intent of, the spirit of what you're saying, so like, you know, it seems a bit silly to even question it, but it makes me think of, you know, when we discuss the federal money and how we're going to, almost using it as an opportunity to see things that could work. You know, I can definitely see the post-COVID world being different and better. And I'm not saying, you know, that's, it almost sounds like a different goal. So I'm not saying change that idea, but it's just something perhaps, you know, to have on our collective radar, and this just made me think of it.
Yeah. So the goal, the intent of that language is really based on parent feedback of bringing back what we've missed all the past year and a half.
I think it goes back to that social-emotional, as opposed to necessarily all the gains we've made, just going now to one-on-one. And that wasn't a pre-COVID, this new, and that's something we've gained. But I just think it's more, what we're focusing on, and I think across the nation, is more of a social-emotional, getting back to a safe place where kids can relate.
Yeah, no, and to be clear, I'm not suggesting, you know, you have to take out that word. It was just a trigger to think of another point that is not really related to that, but again, worth discussing. Maybe not even in this particular discussion. I know the superintendent's goals are at the level they're at for a reason. So, yeah, but again, just to put it out there. Could be something we talk about in our next item, in the board.
So Brendan brings an interesting point in that when I read this, I thought of us being on an upward trajectory, you know, continuous improvement going like this. And then COVID comes, and that kind of takes like a pause, right? You're in crisis management, and you're trying to just stay above water, right? Now, when I read the pre-COVID, it's like getting back on that track and continuing to advance and improve. That's how I read that. So it's funny how we read the same phrase and come up with different perspectives, but that's, yeah, good.
Okay, thanks. All right, thank you. Thank you, Terry. Oh, go ahead, Larry.
Just on the one-to-one, you're confident we have the technical support and instructional support to pull this off?
Very confident. So I don't ever put a goal forth that I'm not confident that we'll achieve. I did state in our Superintendent's Conference Day, and Larry was there, so he may be saying this for the benefit of everyone, going to one-to-one is beyond a device. So the easiest thing to do is buy a bunch of devices and just give them out like candy. The purpose of going one-to-one is that instructional practice and what you're preparing our students for changes because of what they have in front of them. So without one-to-one, there's less collaborative work that can occur, writing joint papers and things of that nature, projects and things of that nature. So this is the device end, so I'm very confident on that piece, but we have a long way to go to truly think about what could be, to Brendan's point, of even better in the years to come with our one-to-one work.
And you let out my secret.
Okay, thank you very much. We're going to move on to board goals. I had sent you all a memo, I asked you to look over the board goals from last year and to come back with your thoughts and ideas. And we could kind of hammer that out. If we need to change anything, to tweak anything, then we should be doing that. So I'll open the floor for discussion.
Nancy, I'll crack the seal on this discussion. So what I noticed was missing, and I think we've covered basically the major food groups, you know, facilities and the like, the academics. The one thing that I didn't see was personnel. And so from my experience in my real job, when we go through these types of assessments of where we are and what we want to do for the, you know, the next year, two, three, whatever, we always state the people, because without the people, we don't get the job done, right? Someday, computers will do it all, I get it, but we're not there yet. So I, not that I disagree with anything that's written there, I emphatically agree with it. The one thing that I would recommend we discuss is how we could add a people component to those goals, and this...
So, John, do you have something you can share with us more specifically?
I do, but I just throw that out there just to get the conversation started. I'm sure there are other things going to be discussed, too, but happy to share that at the end. I don't want to hog all the time.
Yeah. No, I was thinking along those lines as well. I think that, and I support that, that the challenge to making that real is, you know, following the structure that we have currently, you know, laid out in the document, it's always like ideal action, you know? So it, because the idea is we want to be able to look back and say, well, did we achieve that or not? So I think, you know, looking at it from that perspective, and certainly, you know, my understanding is that we will come back next time, two weeks or whenever our next meeting is, and have draft language that we will perhaps even tweak, you know, in the moment, and we can certainly email back and forth. So this becomes, you know, a scripting exercise, more or less. But I hear what you're saying, and I would be interested if anybody else had other ideas, because I guess I'm throwing my hat in the ring to do the draft again. I've done it the last couple of years, so I just assume. Terry, good.
I just, I'm not sure, I think we had the conversation last year, I'm just trying to, I wonder if the superintendent's goals that the board adopts should be the district goals.
Right.
And then the board discusses, you know, board goals, but I'm not sure there should be a different set of district goals.
Yeah.
But there may be a rhyme or reason why there were separate superintendent and district goals.
Well, I think we were probably, no, I think you're right. And that's, it was probably a product of us taking a couple of years to get to where we should. Like, it used to be that there was no real alignment, and I think it's, it was a little more alignment last year, but you're right, it should pretty much be word for word. So I agree with that. So but the question is then, does the personnel stuff fall under board goals? Because there's the difference between board and district goals.
Well, I think we would need specifics for that, and that's what I asked you all to bring to this meeting, was a little bit more specifics, that we could discuss those specifics, write those out, and then what you would get for the next meeting would be like in a different, I'm thinking back to what we did last year, which I personally found helpful, is that in, there would be a different color type that you would see to see where the changes were made, or where additions were made, or things that were taken out. So everyone was asked to bring their thoughts to this meeting, just to facilitate it and to move us forward. We also cannot remind everybody, we cannot go emailing back and forth, because then that's a meeting, and that's a violation of the open meetings law. So we can't have email conversations back and forth with each other as well, but, so if you want it, if there's specifics you have right now about personnel that we could then bring back to the next meeting, that would be, that would be helpful. Nina, go ahead.
Sorry, I'd just like to kind of bounce off what Terry was saying before. And, you know, I think, you know, taking this to the way, you know, in my day job, I generally set up goals. You've got a job description, right, which is broader than what your, those specific goals that you cited are for the years. And I think perhaps with the board, our goals would be both, you know, as broad as that job description, and then with some of those very specific points that you brought up. So I think our goals as a board might be slightly further reaching.
Anyone else? Jim, go ahead.
Sure. The one thing I noticed is we have, I think it's a good document, we have academics on here, and I don't see anything about extracurriculars. I don't know if that's the proper term of the art these days, that's what we used to call it, you know, but maybe we want to add that, either maybe change academics to student development, and we can include academics and extracurriculars, or maybe add another section saying, you know, we want to make sure that we continue to offer the programs we can, we offer in terms of sports, arts. We heard about our great students earlier with the NISPRA band, you know, and other programs along those lines. So I just think that's something that we do that's great as a district, and we should capture it in the document.
That's good, thank you very much.
Nancy?
Yes, Larry.
I've always looked at these as the superintendent has his goals. We give the superintendent and the district direction by giving district goals, and then we as a board have our own goals that we want to meet. I've always been a little concerned that we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, and a proposed ninth goal. I'm wondering if that's kind of too specific or too many? Is there a way that we can bring these down and wordsmith it so that it encompasses fewer goals, where really one goal is encompassing a number of these that we're looking at here? Just a thought. The after-school activities and, see, we could take a lot of that and incorporate it into a goal that deals with budget. we could take a lot of that and incorporate it into a goal that deals with budget, for instance, where we want to make sure certain things are covered in a budget. So just as a thought.
Yeah, definitely don't want it to get unwieldy. I think the risk is that they become too general, that if you combine them too much, consolidate too much, they become so general that they start to lose their specific meaning. And I'm also not afraid of, I mean, personally, you know, itemizing goals that we don't entirely meet, because then we know that we're stretching ourselves appropriately. And, you know, if they're too easy to achieve, then you're not setting your sights high enough. But to that point, we don't want this to just become, year after year, we just keep adding stuff. So to Jim's suggestion, I think that's something that we can fold into existing goals, and it would make that one better.
Very.
So I agree with that.
I guess that's the direction I'm thinking of, is there a way that we can at least wordsmith it so that it becomes two become one?
Yeah.
So that, you know, not nine become two, you know?
Twelve, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Or 12.
Right.
John, go ahead.
Thanks, Nancy. This is a great discussion. And I think a lot of this would potentially be cured if we actually had a strategy document. Because from that grand strategy document would flow the appropriate goals and the missions for various people to go support that overall strategy, all the way to the lower level. And I know, you know, we've taken a pause because of COVID, but maybe now that Terry is like, hey, we need to get back on track, you know, pre-COVID, maybe we start as a board talking about ways that we can really pursue building a strategy document that encompasses a three, five-year horizon to include the finances, as well as the action steps to support it. If we did that, I think many of these little onesies and twosies would fall by the wayside, and we'd get the alignment that Brendan rightfully, and Terry, too, I think, was talking about. How do we make sure we're aligned here? That document would go a long way to making sure that's in line, in my view.
Okay, so, thanks, John. So go ahead, Teresa, and then I'm just, I'm gonna...
I'm a little confused, to be honest. More about what this, more about what the document should be, I think it becomes a little convoluted. It takes a life of its own. And to me, it takes away from what we are, I don't want to spend as much time on the goal as getting things done. I don't know if that makes sense, but that's how I feel. What I was, if we're talking about a five-year plan, I'm not sure, John, is that what you're referring to? Like a five-year plan for the district as far as facilities or this or that?
Yeah, well, without the risk of turning this into a working session, right? I would say that normally, strategy documents do have a time horizon associated with them, and they're like three to five years on where you want to be. But, you know...
No, no, it's actually...
And those goals, then, are actionable steps to get you to that destination of where you want to be. And that's...
And that's fine.
That's how, at least, my business does it.
I'm not disagreeing. All I'm saying is, when it comes to a board that can change every year, as far as a board goal...
Yep.
You could have, within one year, three brand-new members. And the goals, everything could totally change. So to look too far out in the future, to me, it's, now, for a superintendent and the app to say, okay, this is our five-year plan, or a four, that makes, that, to me, makes more sense.
Teresa, we're gonna let Terry go, please.
Just quickly, one of the things I brought to the board and with Louis and Nancy's help was the urgency to have goals established as soon as possible. So that's why, you know, I really pushed for, at this meeting, if not before, to adopt the superintendent goals. I don't want surprises for staff and things of that nature. If we go down strategic plan, you have to get your board goals done now. We don't have time to wait months to get that. So I think it's a both-and. Do goals now, and then have a separate conversation about, do we want to develop a strategic plan? That's a years-long process.
If you're lucky.
So that we hit the ground, if you're lucky.
If you're lucky.
So that you're hitting '22, '23 with a document in place and establishing goals. So I think we have to get some work done now on board goals, and then have that conversation later on.
Okay, so...
I'll just add to Terry's point, everybody. Remember, we all agreed on a document early on when we adopted super eval for milestone dates, for the superintendent's review through that whole process, for 2021, and then '21, '22. And that's what, you know, my reminder hit about super eval triggered me to poke Terry about, hey, FYI, we got something coming up. He already had it in his queue, so that's what precipitates, you know, tonight's getting this ironed out.
Great. Okay, so what I'm going to ask my board to do is to look this over, email me, not the board, okay? Because we don't want to have an illegal meeting. So you're going to email me your thoughts. If you want to go line by line with the board goals, change the color, whatever you feel. And I'm going to give you a deadline of Saturday. So please get me your thoughts by Saturday. And then I will put it all together. I will get it back to you to look at. And then you can think about it and look at it until our next meeting. Then we give you like a week to do that.
Is that end of day Saturday?
Sure, end of day Saturday, Brendan. Thank you. Okay?
And that is, on Saturday, what, midnight?
No, end of my day is not midnight, trust me.
No.
Okay. We're going to move on to our next, our next item, non-business present, we have a presentation, proposed capital project presentation by Terry Harvey and Garrett Hamlin.
Speaking of long-term planning, we are excited to present to the board for consideration some thoughts with regards to a potential capital project for our district. Before I get any further, I wanted to introduce Garrett Hamlin and Barb Chambers, who are new partners with Tetra Tech. So we're very excited to have them, a well-respected firm, and we could not even think about engaging in this process without their support. So thank you for being here. You're going to hear plenty from them in just a bit. Our agenda for the presentation is talking a little bit about a long-term strategic approach, the funding source for the board and community to consider, the timeline to make all of this happen, and then some immediate next steps that we need to engage in to keep this train moving forward, hopefully to a successful May. So a few points with regards to our long-term approach. First, why now? It's no secret that we've had two bonds go forward in two recent history that have gone down. But when I got to the district, I asked a lot of questions about the why. Why do we think? What was happening at the time and things of that nature? Because doing the same thing over and over again is going to get the same end result. So one of the reasons for why now is we just, last year, received the results of our building condition survey, and all of our buildings, every single one, is in great need of repair and support. So there's no question of, do our buildings need support? Yes, they do. We can all confidently say that. The difference from what I believe happened before to what we're proposing now is that we have funding in place that would eliminate any local tax impact to the community through the use of our capital reserve. And Harvey will talk about that a little bit later. So again, want to highlight emphasis, that point, is the funding would be of no impact to our community. This would be a multi-year initiative. So the work that we need done in this district, the price tag is far too costly than what our voters would be able to really work with. So we have a two-pronged approach. One, to identify our highest priorities for now, and then the remaining priorities to be taken care of in 2029, once our high school debt is paid off. Okay? And then finally, the scope. That's going to be the really, really difficult but fun work, is identifying what are those highest priorities that we would take care of sooner rather than later. The board's facilities committee, which is comprised of community members, board members, staff, and the like, would take the lead role in identifying that scope. So really being, engaging the community with identification of this. But the facilities committee is really going to take the primary lead on this. So Harvey's going to talk next about the funding sources.
So with any project, it's always critical to ask the question, how are we going to pay for this? There's rarely a district out there that doesn't need work. And the other side of the coin, though, doesn't always match up, and that is, how do we pay for it? In our particular case, besides having the right amount of funding, we want to make sure it equals or equates to minimizing or almost entirely eliminating any kind of an impact to the taxpayer. Terry mentioned, you know, when he came on board, what have we been doing in the past, and what can we change differently? One of the things we heard was, we need to minimize the taxpayer impact. So it took a couple of years, and we got there. The first thing we did was, back in 2018, the taxpayers approved a reserve, a capital reserve that we set up. When you set up a capital reserve, you have to give it a funding limit by law. The funding limit that we attached to it was $5 million. I'm happy to say that as we finish closing out the current 2020, '21 school year that just passed, we will be at that full $5 million. That's good news. Additionally, we have a bond that's on the books right now. It's a 15-year bond that will be expiring in April of 2023. That's $3.6 million additional that could be added to this project and not have any additional impact to the taxpayers. Of an important note here is, what kind of aid do we get from the state? Our state aid is approximately 75%. What that essentially means, for every eligible expense that we put into this project, we will get 75% back, or 75 cents on the dollar. Okay? That's a really good rate. So when you take all of this into account, what you're going to find is that we can do a capital project between $20 and $23 million and have no impact on the tax rate and/or the taxpayers. Again, part of the dynamics with regard to this is making sure, and this is where the architects, the engineers, the construction managers, they can, they can structure this in such a way that we squeeze every debatable cost out of this project. And at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Garrett Hamlin.
Good evening. Harvey didn't realize what a risk it was to hand me a microphone. So I'd like to digress for just one moment and introduce myself. First of all, I have with me Barb Chambers, and Barb's a senior architect. I'll let her speak for one minute in a moment. But I have been with Tetra Tech for 20 years. I'm celebrating my anniversary in just a couple of days. The firm has been doing school projects, K-12 school projects in New York for almost 60 years, 60 years. And we bring a lot of expertise to the table, and I'm really, really glad to be here, because I think we can, as Mr. Date said, we can partner with you guys, and we have a lot to offer. So Barb, if you would just give us a minute?
Hi, it's nice to meet you all. So I am a licensed architect, and I've got Garrett beat. I've been with the firm 31 years, which means when I celebrated my 30-year anniversary, I got to watch my boss eat the cake over Zoom. The cake was on her end. So, and I've been focusing on K through 12 projects that entire 31 years. And so very used to managing projects like this.
So I'm going to do the presentation tonight, but you will hear plenty from Barb along the way. So as I said, we have a lot of experience with capital projects. I'm going to come over here so the audience can see me, too. And this slide talks about our process for how we do capital projects. And it's a very proven process that I'm not going to spend a whole lot of time on this slide. You can review it at your leisure, and we'll talk about it along the way. But the most important thing is to talk about where we are right now. We finished, the district has finished facilities evaluation. You have your building condition survey, which will be a foundation for the work that we do moving forward. And we're in what we call the project definition stage. So we'll be working together to develop scope for the project. There's plenty of other things that will happen along the way, but I'll save those for another day. So as I started thinking about this capital project and planning for a May vote, one of the things that we do right at the outset is to think about what the whole timeline for the capital project would look like. So if we vote in May, we would start designing right away, obviously. And that's a lengthy process, depending on the scope, can take six to nine months sometimes. That puts us in a timeframe of finishing the design and submitting to SED at the end of this year, in December of 2021. SED has to review the project. State Education Department is the permitting agent. They issue the building permit. They can take a long time to review projects or a short time. Right now, they're very short. They're two weeks approving projects. A couple of years ago, they were 52 weeks. So it does change over time, and we can't count on it being that short. But there will be a review period. And what this does in this timeline is it puts us bidding sometime in late spring. And that's not the best time to bid a project, a capital project. You really want to bid projects earlier in the year, when contractors are hungry. And so this is a, this is an achievable schedule, but there's a lot of downsides, and there's some real risks associated with it. And so one of the things that we started to consider is, if we break the project into two phases, we can do a shorter design period for the first phase, get into SED earlier, and then start construction. We'd be bidding earlier, and we'd be starting construction earlier. We would pick things that would be faster to design, things that wouldn't necessarily need heavy teacher input, user group input, because we'd be designing over the summer. So paving, parking lots, roofs, those kinds of things would be things that we could do in a Phase 1 project, get it into SED. And then we'd be able to start construction in 2023. So that's a, it's a long ways out, but it's important to recognize that. And I realized, actually, I misspoke earlier. We'd finish design in the first scenario, December of 2022. So what this schedule does for us then is it allows us to start a Phase 2 design in the fall of 2022, when teachers are back, everybody's back in school, and we're able to start designing those other elements of the project. We'd finish that design in the middle of 2023, get into SED. And then the beauty of this schedule is we'd be bidding this project, the Phase 2 project, at the perfect time. We could pick exactly when we want to hit the market, the bid market, and maximize our bid results as an outcome of that. So one of the things that I want to spend a minute thinking about with you is, what does it take to get to a vote? There's a lot of things that lead us to May 2022 vote. And it starts with presentations to the board, and getting you up to speed, getting your input. And those will happen all along the way. So you see a line there with the board meetings. We're going to have regular discussions with the board all throughout the process. It's really important to us. I'm sure it is to you, too. The other thing, the second line, the consultant team assembled. So you've hired your architect, you have your finance, your legal, your hazardous material. There's one member of the team that we're recommending that you add to this team, and that is the construction manager. They're responsible for scheduling and for budgeting of the project, and for oversight during construction. And so Harvey issued an RFP for... And so Harvey issued an RFP for CM recently. Those will be due and discussed at your upcoming Facilities Committee meeting on the 14th, with the goal of awarding the CM or appointing the CM at your next board meeting. Right, Harvey? The other thing I want to point out is that scope development is something that's very time-intensive. And we want to go slow enough through it and have an open process for it so that people have input on it. I I know that there are certain things that are must-dos, and we'll start with those, and then it will evolve over time. The the goal of this process is to finish the scope development by January of 2022, which would set you up for a board resolution in February for the proposition. That'd be a seeker resolution and the board resolution itself. And then you'd vote in May. And then the last thing that I want to point out is that the communication strategy is really critical. We've worked in districts that have had trouble passing votes. And, you know, as as Mr. Date said, you want to do some things differently. Otherwise, you're going to get the same results. And one of the things that we think is very, very important at this point is to have an ongoing communication strategy. So that line on the bottom is green, and it's light at this point. And then once the board starts to have a confidence in the scope that's coming out, we'll want to see increased communications going on with the community so that everybody knows about it and knows what's going on. We also want the community to have an opportunity for input on things, too. And we think that's important.
Thank you, Garrett. So next steps before we open it up to the board for questions. Our recommended next steps is are a few-fold. One, that the facilities committee would convene and provide the board with recommended list of the highest priorities. There is a, an existing five-year facilities plan that will go out to the board and up on our website for everyone to review. But I wanted a chance to speak tonight to the board and to the community to provide context. One of the things that Garrett mentioned that's critically, critically important to this whole process is the hiring of a construction manager. In the document that the community and our board is going to see on Wednesday, there's numbers all over the document. These numbers are outdated and not going to be as current as we would need them to be to make some very important decisions. So I wanted to be able to provide that context to the board and the community before it goes out to both groups next week. The other piece that we'll provide some language for is our previous architect started doing some work of his recommendations with regards to priorities, but it wasn't a complete process. So all of this is important, and you'll understand more once you get the document. So based on our building condition survey, here's all of the needs that we could engage in as a community with a with a project, and even some kind of wish areas of what we might do. And then there's columns that will follow of what those costs could be and some determinations by our previous architect of, this should be a highest priority, so it should be taken care of year 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5. So I I wanted some time to be able to provide that context because when you're operating in numbers that don't necessarily match up to the current time, it's really hard to make some difficult decisions. So I wanted to say all of that now that we have Garrett and Barb, and when, once we hire a construction manager, those are the folks who we can press with, are we sure that this project will cost X, Y, or Z? Okay? So the facilities committee would convene to start to develop those highest priorities to present to the board. Our district's communication committee would also convene. This, this process, this journey is no joke. Once we move forward from today, we're going to be touching this every single meeting. Every week, there's going to be work that needs to be done to get us to a successful outcome in May. So I'm going to ask that we stay disciplined. There's lots of down-in-the-weeds questions that we might have right now, but we're not anywhere near the weeds. We are up in the clouds right now, thinking about a few things. When we last met with the facilities committee, we wanted to be able to identify funding. What is the funding source that our board would feel comfortable with proceeding with for a capital project? What is the amount, and where is the money coming from? Really, really important question. The second outcome would be, are we good to go moving forward with starting the process so that we can start to engage in this work? Knowing that there's tons of work to do with our facilities committee, our community, with our partners in Tetra Tech to start to iron out details. So I wanted to make sure, is there anything to add before we turn it over? Harvey, did I miss anything? All right, so I open up to the board for any questions that you might have.
Hi. Thank you for that thorough presentation. When it comes to a construction manager, are we talking about hiring someone as an employee of the district? Or is this going to be a consultant role where they're working on our projects and perhaps other things?
This is a, sorry, this is a consultant role. We would take somebody who is very seasoned and knows this field inside and out.
And we'd have a sense of their their other commitments and their time commitment to us through that process?
Absolutely. And typically, when you hire a CM, you require them to be onsite a certain amount of time. There's certain feet-in-the-field requirements that they will have to adhere to. So if they don't have it, they would hire more people, but we would be assured of that presence.
And they, is that, I mean, when they come in to bid, it, there's a, are we talking time and charges or flat fee? Like, when you say, if they don't have enough time, they hire other people. So do we get a sense of the level of staffing and who's going to be here to give us those hours?
And that's part of the RFP.
Okay.
Yes. Everything you mentioned is in there.
So regarding the construction manager, their duties are basically, if I, if I understand it correctly, to oversee the entire project, schedule who's coming into the buildings at what time, you know, to to make sure that we're maximizing everything, right? Their time and and their knowledge of the buildings and things. I'm wondering whether whether that would be something that our facilities director of facilities might be good at, just because he knows the buildings. He has that, he's got an engineering, like, degree, and he's, I mean, he'll, he'll tell you the bit, the schools are like his babies, which is a little weird, but, you know, we let it go. But I'm wondering whether that could save the district money? I don't know if that's a possibility. I'm just trying to think of.
I'll have Garrett chime in from his work in other districts. I can just say, in my previous role, the duties and responsibilities of a construction manager would not allow Walter to do anything else. So we love Walter, but he's well-needed in so many other aspects of the district. So it wouldn't be something I would, I would recommend because of the lift that's required and all the intricacies. So not his, not, not because he doesn't have the skill set, but because of all of the hats that he wears in his current, in his current role.
Just not enough hours in the day. But I'm guessing he would be the ex, the the expert of the buildings, right? As far as being part of this whole thing. He would be the go-to guy.
First of all, Walter's a real asset to your district. That was clear coming in. But he's going to need to be involved in the capital project, working closely with the construction manager. And so, you know, Walt, Walt was a construction manager, frankly, in in a former life. But you need one now that's going to allow Walter still do his day job, as as Mr. Date said. But I'd like to just speak a little bit about the value of having a construction manager. So in a project of this size, it's really important to have someone who can, who is dedicated 100% during construction, eyes and ears on the construction. They will be here whenever construction is going on. That's very critical because it protects the board and the district from contractors who will just be wanting to do what they want. The architects will show up periodically. The construction manager's there all the time. That's number one. Number two, the construction manager plays a very important role from a budgeting standpoint. They are regularly estimating projects. They have expertise at that. And so they can give very precise values of what the bids should be ahead of time. And that'll be very important during design because we need to be able to understand, are the designs tracking to what the budgets are? And do we need to adjust things before bid so we don't come to surprises on bid day? Because that's, that's never a good thing. And then lastly, the construction managers are going to be involved, as you said, in scheduling. And scheduling of the project is actually very important, depending on how the work's going to go, both from how will it impact the district, but also how will it, how will the contractors undertake the work? And so a good schedule, a well-thought-out schedule ahead of time will help attract bidders because bidders come to the table, contractors come to the table, and they know it's a logical process. They understand it, it makes sense. It's been thought out from their perspective and obviously from the district's perspective. So a good schedule makes, makes for good bid results, but it also makes for a smooth project. Because if you wake up and you have a schedule that's, you know, wasn't achievable, and we learn that two weeks after bid day, that's problematic. So those, those expertise that the construction managers bring to the table are really important, especially of a project of this size. If we were talking about a smaller project, a three-to-five-million-dollar project, you know, you'd do it as a clerk of the works, and I think that would be acceptable. But for this size project, construction manager is absolutely the way to go.
Thank you very much.
That also includes the logistics to minimize the impact because we realize you're still trying to run schools here. So they really work on minimizing the impact to your facilities as all that's going on. So that's the other piece of the phasing.
I've, I've been on a board during major, oh, I'm sorry. I always forget this thing. I've, I've been on a board during major construction and projects like this. You can't do it without a construction manager. It, it's impossible. There's also an amount of accountability because, it's true, the architects aren't there all the time. And the, the person that is hired for that position is, is more than critical. And, and the accountability is more than critical because down the road, when you look at change orders and other things like that, you need to know who you're dealing with and that this person is holding those subs accountable.
Right.
My next question comes into cost. Right now, everyone that I know, I'm, I, I work on the outside of construction fields. And it's residential, doesn't have anything to do with this. But materials has to do with it. And right now, materials are up about, like, wood, 243%.
Right.
So I understand it came down 22% last month. So now it's only up 225% when you look at it. How are we going to, I, I also know there's a short, well, we all know there's a shortage of workers. And right now, with what's being proposed from our federal government with capital projects all over the the country, how difficult is it going to be, A, to get the people that we need? Quality people? Obviously, they're going to cost a lot because as far as hungry right now, I don't know what time of the year you're going to find really hungry guys because you can't find them. And the other part of that is the cost of materials. Will we be dealing with escalation clauses? Because they're, they're talking about shortages all the way around. I'm not, I believe capital projects are more than necessary in this, in this community, in the school district. That's not the question.
Yeah.
It just seems that we have no choice, but we're in a very difficult time to be doing it at the same time.
Yeah, all the things that you raise are spot-on. This is a very challenging market. And forecasting into the future is, is going to be, it's as much of an art as a science. Accountability for the construction manager starts with budgeting the project. So they're ultimately responsible for determining what the escalate, cost escalation values that we're going to carry on this project will be. And the, I, I will say that we have been successfully building school projects in the middle of a pandemic. We, we kept work going last year. It was crazy. It was challenging. Every day was a new challenge. And we're seeing those same kinds of things this year, but the, the industry that we're working in has somewhat stabilized. And so contractors are still bidding projects. We're seeing decent bid results, things that are, you know, not crazy and out of line. Because one of the things that I learned during the pandemic is that contractors really want to work. And so they were anxious to see projects coming back on, on, online. And I, I, you know, it's, there's a lot of risk in all of this, frankly. Even if we didn't have a pandemic going on, we'd be dealing with risks. That's what we do. We manage risk as partners with you guys. And, you know, I have a lot of confidence that we can be successful. The world will probably be different in 2023 when we're bidding Phase 2 of this project, but we'll, we'll work through it. That's what we do.
I think, I think the main, I, I know what my main concern would be. You know, nobody ever told me in my household that they couldn't hear me. I think what my main concern would be is the quality of the work. I have seen the results of shoddy building. And unfortunately, in, in the district here, there's been some things that were done in, in the past that, you know, right now, we're paying the price. And that's, that's life, it's what it is. But whoever you hire in this position is, it is critical because they have to be accountable.
I'll go on record and say one thing. We won't stand for that.
Sorry, I also wanted to to mention, if you're familiar at all, if you've ever been through a project like this, the idea of alternates during bid, which means there are certain pieces of work we identify separately. And we say, contractor, give us a separate price to do this. So then, when you have the bid opening, if prices are coming in a little bit high, you've already set, like, of all the things on the wish list, these are the ones, they'd be great, but they're not critical. And then you don't award those if you're over. So your whole project is not over. You've not put all your eggs in one basket. And what is nice about that is often there's a little bit of a contingency, which is a number for the unexpected during construct because unexpected always happens. You just don't know what that wa, is in that wall until you tear it down. So if you get towards the end of the project and you've not spent all that money, you can sometimes go back and do that work later because the state has already approved it. And there's, I don't want to get into the weeds. We've got some other tricks up our sleeves, too, to help protect the budget, so.
I have one, one quick question, Garrett. In the hierarchy of the management, the management structure that would get established between a CM and architect and the owner, the district, us, you know, our taxpayers, how does that flow chart, how does that management flow chart land with, with the architectural firm and the CM? Who takes point?
So first of all, both the architect and the CM have separate contracts directly with the owner. So we work side by side with the construction manager. Generally, how it works is we're in the lead during the design phase of the project or design phases. During construction, they generally are in the lead. So it's a, it's a partnership, and that's very important that you select a CM that's, you know, going to work well with us. It's an arranged marriage to some, to some extent. But usually, the way it works is we'll lead during design, they'll lead during construction.
Okay. It's, it's critical, I think, for the board to understand that when this comes to fruition, there has to be a single point of accountability. While it is dual management ship, you can kind of say, when it comes to someone standing at that day as to explain an overage or a windfall, it needs to be, you know, that, that guy.
Well, the architect explains windfalls.
Right. The CM does the short.
Who's not here yet.
Hey, Garrett, Garrett. Sorry, one, one last question. Terry, you brought up the numbers that we're going to see. And, you know, don't be misled or whatever by the numbers. Garrett, based on what you're working on now, what type of, and getting back to what Teresa was asking for, right? What, those manager expectations versus those numbers, they're not realistic, obviously, based on, on when they were generated, right? So, so, so are we talking 20, 30, 50, 200? What, can you?
I honestly don't know. We haven't reviewed them enough and been down in those details to be able to, to give you a ballpark.
So, so, so those are our numbers. But the numbers that you've dealt with, with, with school districts that you're currently engaged with, right? So, so you, you plan one thing, and then COVID hits. Now you're, you're faced with getting creative. I think that's the, the word that Barb said, which I understand completely, right? You're managing, which is, which is what people get paid to do, right? Manage, manage the risk. Is there a sense of, no, can't go there?
It's, 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 it's the Wild West out there in some regard.
Okay.
It's hard to say.
Right.
Yeah.
Thanks.
One, one of the things that I think you're going to see in those numbers that we saw at the last committee meeting, at the last committee meeting, some of the numbers are way too high. So, they're really off. So, that, that there's a, there's a, it's going to be a trade off. It's, some of the numbers were estimated high, higher than what committee members thought there would be. So, it may not be as bad as, as it is going to look Wednesday.
And we'll, we'll tee it up for the board by way of a memo that I'll work on with Harvey and Walter. My conversations with Harvey and Walter were irrespective of numbers. When you talk about priorities, I don't care what something costs, if our kids need it, then it's a top priority. And that's where I want the board to remain, is how do we prioritize the needs of the district? How do we engage our community and our staff? Like, what are our top priorities? And then, like Barb said, you start to, you start to sift through it. And those of you that have engaged in this work, we would love to have this, but not now. That's a 2028. We need this in the next three years, that's our top priority, so it's going to take a little bit more cost, but it, it, it comes with consequence. We have to stay in that realm. So, when I, when I tee it up for you, again, try to stay in the, in the mindset of what does our, what do our kiddos need to be the most successful in the next few years, thinking in the next five to 10 years? And then let our construction manager and our architects do the hard work of filing in those numbers and, and starting to prioritize against cost from that list.
Terry, so, I agree completely. I think the, well, first of all, thank you to all of you and Harvey for the, I mean, this is a multi-year thing. You, you mentioned, this is the result of having a multi-year vision, to get to the point where we can put up a capital project that won't have any impact to the taxpayers. That's great. And it's like such a good deal, that you think, how can we screw this up? How can we lose? But no, this, this is a very important answer to this. How can we, how can we lose a bond that doesn't add to the taxpayer? We lose if the people don't feel like we are hitting, we're paying for the right projects. Because they'll, they'll say to themselves, well, if we have the money, we'll just keep rejecting it until they make it, they, they give us our wish list. So, and Nina just mentioned something to me, and I, I think it's totally the case. I, I think we need to, we need to work in concert, the facilities committee, the communication committee, making sure that when we, I, I understand we have to have, we can't, the, the entire board can't do every job. So, there's something mentioned here, that the facilities committee would work with the board, with a, provide a recommended list of the highest priorities. I would make a request, a request, that that is a, it's a broad range, you know, so maybe twice as many as what will eventually be on the bond, because those are, that's where this will be won or lost, based on what we actually choose to fund. And so, I think those, those decisions are, are critical, and we need to get as many eyes on that as possible, with the understanding we need to do this quickly. And then we can start formulating a communication strategy to, to back that up. And I would say outreach as well, because it'll be just as much, if not more, about getting a sense of what those items that people will support are, before we start promoting it, pushing it, et cetera.
Several years, several years ago, I, the state gave, gave the districts money, and they were able to spend it, and would have, it would have impacted the district, it was about 10 years ago, at zero impact, and to do certain projects. And they had to be voted on, but it was zero impact. The money was going to be given, as long as the budget, the voters approved taking it. There were three districts in the state that didn't approve it. And it was literally money that they just had to say yes to. I don't, I don't want to, I don't think it's, I, I think parent and community surveys are important with certain items and certain things, things we just talked about, your goals. When it comes to the buildings and facilities, that, there will always be people's perception about what they think is more important. It, it's always going to be. I, I think this is more important. We see it all the time in education, sports, music, whatever, the art, the art world. But there's going to be a list of priorities for buildings, I would imagine, things that are critical in our buildings. And I think part, I agree, that the communications and the facility have to work together. But I don't, I don't think it's a matter of finding out from the community what they think they want. It's more of explaining to the community why it's imperative we do this for our, our staff and our students.
So, I, I just, we're getting a little bit down the rabbit hole. So, really, really good, really, really important, important points. What I need tonight is, we've, we've identified a potential funding source and potential next steps. What has been described by Brendan and Teresa absolutely adeptly, these are things that have tanked other things in the past, that, that is not going to happen here with, with this bond. What our work collectively together as a community is to come up with all of those engagement strategies, communication strategies, what are our mechanisms that we're going to make sure that everyone feels heard? And ultimately, supporting something that benefits our community, and not necessarily just me as the Dade family. So, that, that's, we, we have a long way to go. This is, this is a marathon, not a sprint. Step one was to, this is brand new information to our entire community and board, that we want to put up a referendum in May with, that could cover a scope of 20 to 23 million dollars, at no impact to our tax payer, paying community. Do we feel that that is the right direction to go, knowing that there is nothing that I'm going to be doing that's going to be a higher priority if we move with this forward, of, of working with Tetra Tech in our board and community and our staff, to make sure that we have all those i's dotted and t's crossed? So, when I say we're going to touch this every meeting, we will have ample opportunity. Remember my desire to have work sessions, and, and the board supported that. Great work session topics. How do we engage our community in such a ways that it's genuine, but also with parameters around it, that our building condition survey says, you must fix this at Willow? That, those are two very different conversations, wants versus need. So, just want to make us, take us a little bit back up to the, to the clouds, funding source, and those potential next steps are kind of where we are thinking of now. And then, there's a, there's a ton of work to, to do. Nancy?
Okay. Thank you, Terry, and thank you, Garrett and Barbara, thank you, Harvey, and we'll wait for the next step.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you all for being here.
Okay, so we're up to our next item of business, which is our second time for recognition of visitors. If there's anyone who wishes to speak, you may come up to one of the microphones up front, and please state your name, and please remember that you have three minutes in which to speak. If there's anyone that wishes to speak right now, they can come forward.
I'm Brenda Wright, CCTA president. I have just two questions tonight. Where does the district see Cornwall schools in three years and five years from now? When talking about teamwork, who are the members of this team? I believe CCSD is truly better when we all work together. Thank you.
Thank you, Brenda. Okay, and we'll now move on to board comments. Larry?
First of all, thank you, Harvey and all, for, for that presentation. Will this be on board docs? Will you take this presentation? Thank you. Yeah, oh, good. Okay. I want to congratulate the Allstate students. That's, that's become an annual occurrence for us, and that's really, really great. I want to say that the boys soccer team, the varsity, won tonight, just to, as a by the way. I kept getting updates. And I'm very excited to, to start this process with this project. I think it's, it's going to do well. I have faith in this one. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Teresa?
I'm also very excited about looking at this cap, these capital projects, because I have, I know that the community is, is aware, as I am, that there is, there is work needed to be done within the buildings and within our, our properties. I also am very, very happy to see that we seem to be, although we had a delay and it just started, it was really nice to start seeing school buses on the road. And I thank everyone for the presentation tonight, and see you soon.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you. Yeah, so excited for the district to be back, excited to have my kid back. For me personally, Lee Road, I, this is, this is a trip for me. I ate lunch in this room. What is this, this tie? Played the saxophone up on that stage many moons ago, so. Couple, couple of scattershot comments here. John mentioned, and Brenda just mentioned, you know, what is a three to five year plan? And I think that's something that we should work on as a board and as a district, both with facilities, as well as personnel and goals. Sort of something that grew out of our, our board goals discussion today. I think that's something we should take on over the course of this year. Very excited, we obviously have a lot of needs on this capital project, so excited to get to work on that, see where that project, process takes us. I jotted down a few notes, I didn't have questions, but just a few quick comments on it. I think we're already better than the last time we started, because we have done a great job of squirreling that money away, getting the capital fund, the, the reserve where we need to be, so we can do this without a tax increase, to, to certainly make the taxpayers feel, to feel respected. It's always fun to talk about a capital project the day that the tax bill goes out, right? That's what I got in my mailbox today. I think that the, the construction manager role, I, as, as, as a, just the resident, the last time around, I thought the costs were kind of nebulous a little bit, and it seemed like, well, maybe this and that. So, it seems like that construction manager is really going to help us fix that problem and help us nail down that. And just, you know, Terry mentioned top priorities, Brendan said critical decisions, a lot of people said needs and wants. And that's really what's going to be important here, is establishing what are the needs, and making sure that we're just meeting the needs. And, you know, we've identified 20 to 23 million, maybe where the projects break out, maybe we spend 19 this time around, and leave a million dollars for the next go around. Of course, one person's want is another person's need, right? So that we have to balance that. But I think it's just important to make sure that we're really dealing here. We do have a lot of critical infrastructure needs, and it's important to make sure that that's the primary point we're addressing. And I think you, you did a very good job of expressing that point, Terry, so I just want to echo that. And that's it. Thank you.
Brenda?
Thanks, Nancy. Yeah, so again, just to say a, a thank you to Harvey and Terry, and really, everybody, I know Walter, everyone throughout the district for getting us to the point where we can even, we can entertain this. And to do it in a way, again, that has, seems like, has a really good chance of succeeding. That this is a multi-year effort, and I think we're, yeah, we're all in the same spirit for, for looking forward to the, the next few months and, and ready to buckle down and work. I just want to say, this past week has been incredible, to, to have the kids back in school. I now have both of my children in, in the schools, which is people like, wait, you've been on the board and you didn't, one of your kids wasn't even in the schools? But no, I have a kindergartner now and a, and a third grader, and it was, and it's the first day of school all over again. And I, I, I want to just show my appreciation for all of the people that work in this building in particular. This is where we, we send our, our little girls every day. And for the, the teachers in particular, two of them actually are in this room right now, there's Mrs. Creasy and Mrs. Fogarty, who was my daughter's other teacher last year. When you give your, when you give your children, you know, to, to the school for the day, it, there is still that feeling of, you know, giving them up, and just knowing the people that work in these buildings and the quality that they provide, not just in the classroom, in the hallways, everywhere. I mean, from my years of just being involved in the schools, it is, it's an extraordinary feeling, and it, it makes me very grateful as a parent. So, thank you for that, and we look forward to what should hopefully be an incredible year.
Thank you, Brenda. Nina?
So, you know, I, I think I said this last few meetings, but it's just so great to be back five days a week. You know, a year ago, this was, was not within our grasp, and I know there's been a lot of issues to get us back into the, the school. So, thank you to everybody that's, that's had a hand in that. And, you know, my kids have, have graduated a few years ago. I didn't join the board till after they graduated, but, you know, that idea of what it takes to, to educate your children, and the, the care, and the fact that you hand your children over every day, that's a, there's a great appreciation for that. And, you know, together, everybody creates this district, you know, and, and us only at this, this oversight level. So, thank you very much for that. I'd like to say congratulations to the Allstate musicians and to the soccer team as, as well, Larry. And the construction program, I think, you know, we've, we've got a lot of work ahead of us, but it's pretty exciting. As mentioned, as a district, we've seen a couple of bonds voted down, so to see that we've kind of had a plan where we've almost kind of saved to do this, and we're going to leverage off of the state funding, I think, is a strong plan, and how we get this information out there and execute it. And, you know, I've done enough construction projects in my career, between cost overruns and change orders, and, you know, certificates of completion, and, and all the details that get around it, it, it's not always to the dollar that you, you put it out there at. So, I think we have to be very focused and, and careful in terms of, you know, how we put it forth, and, and how people understand what we want to do. And the, there are a lot of needs in our buildings, a number of them are quite old, and not having gotten, gotten those, those bonds out before, there's a lot of things that have long needed to be attended to. So, thank you to everybody that's put that together, and, and I hope, as we go forward, that we can get this done in the most economic and best executed manner.
Thank you. Nina, Margaret?
Yeah, ditto. I have nothing else to add. John?
You stole my line. Actually, Matt's line. I hope, make sure you pay him, because that's been copyrighted, I think. So, so, yeah, great discussion tonight. This notion of a capital initiative is an important one. I believe in the power of threes. You know, this is, I think, our third architect firm. This is maybe the third time we're going to go before the community. I'm feeling good, because the third time's the charm. So, I, I know the board is going to work very diligently in making sure that the priorities line up with, with the needs, the true needs, and that, you know, the input from the community will be taken into account as we move forward, because it is a team effort. And the team is, just to answer that question, I think, that was raised, the team is everyone who is a stakeholder in the success of the district. Everyone, from the youngest kindergartner, all the way to the taxpayer. So, so, so that's who I think is the team, and if we're going to get this capital initiative done, it's going to take the whole team to, or the majority of the team to get it done. So, 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 thank you, Garrett, Barb, for, for being here tonight, and, and setting the, the foundation, if I can coin a term that I heard earlier in the evening, for, for what I hope to be a very successful endeavor. Kudos to our Allstate instrumentalists, fantastic. I mean, they did that last year during COVID, which, when you think about it, is just, you know, beyond the pale in terms of complexity. So, so hats off to them.
off to them. It's the start of a new school year. Going back to what Terry said about trying to be pre-COVID and five day a week and all that stuff. Yeah, that's because I do believe that we are on the, the righteous path. Continuous improvement is something that will, will get us to live up to our, our motto of striving for excellence every day. And I'm very excited for, for this, this school year. Lastly, I just want to clarify one thing about strategy, goals, mission, vision. We had some conversation about it. When, when, when I brought up strategies because we were looking at the goals, but the goals would fall out of what our strategy is if we had it, just like the projects are going to fall out of our facilities initiative because we all understand the strategy is to get the place repaired, right? So, so what those goals are is based on the priorities and, and the needs and the like. And that's the point I was making. I think to, to Jim's point, I think it would be good for the board to think about ways that we could try to, to achieve memorializing a document and, and putting something that is sustainable and provides guidance to every one of those stakeholders, from the kindergartner all the way up to the, to the taxpayer. So, so with that, everyone, good luck and thank you for what you do.
Thank you, John Lewis.
Thanks, Nancy. Garrett and Barb, pleasure to meet you guys. Looking forward to a great future and wonderful stepping stones here tonight. So thank you guys very much. And Terry, I'd like to congratulate you for a moment on what I believe was a great superintendent's conference that I had the opportunity to attend and I did. And I, I thought it was, I thought it was great. I thought it was upbeat and vibrant. I think the minute to win it, event at the end was, was something special. Congratulations to COH for winning it. The first annual, sorry, Lee, but they take it this year. And Darren's, I saw a video of his opening note, his opening, I guess rap or pick a turn, pick a term song. Fantastic. I think that's, that's great. And I'll, I'll grab a little bit of what everybody has said about, you know, school being open five, five days a week, right? So we all stressed last year to in, to out, you know, you, you name the stresses of last year. I think the fact that our kids are all in the district five days a week is a huge, huge milestone. You know, last year, we set the mark, Cornwall set the mark. The board didn't. I know the board didn't. The administration set the mark with getting kids in two days a week even. Everybody shuddered at that. And I know from the, from our onset, it was no doubt that, you know, we were, we were targeting five days. And I'm, I'm, I have gratitude for that. So thank you. And I always thank the teachers. I do. Cause I think, I think you guys do a great job. I think it's, it's, you know, all the terms, the foundation terms, the, the working terms, all of it. I, I think, I think I appreciate you guys doing, doing all what you do, coming in and, and getting it done. Thank you.
Thank you to the presenters today. It's Garrett and Barb. It's a, it's great to have Tetra Tech on board with us and Harvey and Terry, thank you for your input on that as well. Really good start to the year despite the weather challenge. Who knew? And I personally think they should stop using the letter I for hurricanes. So just thank you to everyone for being here tonight. Thank you to my board and the administration. And I would like a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second. Any, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Can we discuss it?
Motion carried, no discussion.